January 12th Planning Board meeting to order. First on the agenda, Paul is the COVID stuff.
With the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the January 12, 2021 public meeting of the physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. One, the meeting will be televised via Falmouth Community Television. Two, real time public comment can be addressed to the planning board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair via the chat function. Submitted text, excuse me, submitted text comments we read into the record at the appropriate points in the meeting. Login instructions. Instructions and meeting link for this specific meeting can be found at the following web address. www.falmouthma.gov backslash planning. Please plan on 10 or 15 minutes of preparation time to log in, though it may be less if you previously use Zoom on the device you will use to access the meeting. Public comments may be sent in advance of the meeting to planning@falmouthma.gov at least five hours prior to the meeting. Documents and audio or video file, video files may be submitted by email. Submitted email comments and documents we made part of the meeting record may be read into the record summarized or displayed during the meeting at discretion of the chair. For applicants, their representatives, individuals with enforcement matters before the planning board may appear remotely and are not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals with enforcement matters before the planning board may contact the planning department to arrange an alternative means of real time participation if unable to use the Zoom virtual meeting software. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations should be submitted in advance of the meeting to planning@falmouthma.gov so that they may be displayed for remote public access viewing.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, we have the minutes of January 5th. Paul, table?
I just received the minutes late this afternoon and there are no comments. I recommend approval of the minutes of January 5th, 2021.
Do I have a second? Pam, seconded. Any comments from anybody? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, seven out of seven. Thank you. Approval not required. And because this approval not required connects to, under public hearing, the Sandwich Road Development LLC. If you all concur, may I have a motion to table it and to take out of order the Michael and Nicole Binghamman public hearing?
So move.
May I have a second? The move seconded by Bob. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Okay. So this is a public hearing continuation. The applicant, Michael and Nicole Binghamman, definitive plan application and special permit application for a six lot planned residential development located at 15B Timothy Bourne Cartway. And I believe we have, I think Kevin Clower was going to be elevated. Yes, John, you were recusing, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Tom, is Kevin in the room yet?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we need to elevate him, Justin. And what about Mike Borcelli?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we need to elevate him.
Yeah, I had just texted Justin to say we're, they were going to take things out of order and I think we're going to do Sandwich Road first, but we are not. So we're retooling over there. Never, never anticipate what the board's going to do.
No, you wanted to do it the other way around when we talked earlier.
I forget a lot of stuff, Madam Chair.
I know you do, Tom. Poor Tom. Okay, so we've got Kevin and Mike. And I've got to find my notes on this. As you know, there were a few things that came up. It's a definitive plan and special permit together. They have, from what I've been able to see, changed the curvature of the road based upon the planning board request from last time to prevent light glare of the house directly across. And the road has been named. Those were two requests. They requested a waiver concerning the center line of the streets. Originally, they had requested a sidewalk waiver. They have, on the planning board discussion, put a sidewalk along the frontage of their property. And there are a few other things that, from my reading of it, and some of you may have some other questions too. But in our decision, because of the number of house slots there would need eye in technology, there was a question raised by the engineering department as to adequately close positioning of hydrant for fire suppression. They wondered if one could be placed on the cartway. And there was another one as to whether catch basin, the catch basins capture all the road runoff. So having presented all of that out of what I've gleaned from all the comments, I don't, I think it's more efficient if we put all this up in front so you two can answer these. Does any other board member have questions that they wish to present first? Okay, I don't see anybody else, so run with it, you guys.
I'll do my best. Again, for the record, my name's Kevin Clower and I do represent the applicants, Michael and Nicole Binghamman. As you noted, we are here requesting an approval of definitive plan as well as a special permit for the planned resident, planned residential development. Since the last meeting, we have made some changes to the plans. One point of clarity, of clarification, is we are still requesting a waiver for sidewalks within the subdivision, although we have agreed to a sidewalk outside the subdivision. So we are still requesting that waiver, just, just for clarification purposes. But we did revise the plans, which included the addition of that sidewalk along the easterly side of Timothy Bourne Cartway. And we did alter the street opening in response to the board, the neighbors' concerns regarding light glare. And there were a number of technical changes that were made to the plans in order to respond to the engineering comments and the staff report. And it's our, our belief that all of those comments and concerns have been addressed by the revised plans that were submitted to the board. I was going to try to keep it as short and sweet as possible tonight because I think that we addressed those things. And unless the board has any other questions, I'll stop talking for the time being.
Does the board have any other questions of either Mike or Kevin? Okay. So, Tom, you know, I didn't clarify this with you earlier. These are two separate things that we're hearing. One is a definitive plan and one is a special permit. I assume we need two different motions to close the hearing, correct? You gotta unmute, Tom.
Yes, ma'am. If the board is prepared to close the hearing tonight, I think one, it's one hearing with both applications in it. So one motion to close the hearing, if the board's prepared to do that, is fine. The decisions will reflect both. There'll be a definitive plan decision and a special permit decision.
Okay. Now, if we close the hearing, we can immediately discuss it, I believe. And then from that, the staff will get things that need to be put into the decisions. And so we will see the decision at approximately when, Tom? Do you think?
Well, our next scheduled meeting is 1/26, January 26th, in two weeks. I, but I think we've got one more review that we're anticipating from engineering.
Oh, we do.
I, I think so. The, as, as I talked to Kevin earlier today, having Kevin and Mike on one project and Bob Ament and Bunker on the other, I keep crossing them over. Barely certain that we're still waiting for one more review from the information that I got from Michaela, feel free to chime in and bail me out.
Yeah, sorry, I was just gonna jump in. Actually, the last report from engineering is they were fine with it.
Okay.
They had revised the plans. The, the last engineering report was that the plans didn't show that all the lots could be 45,000 square feet or more if they were not going for the PRD, which of course they are. They revised those plans and resubmitted it. So engineering had signed off on that.
That's what I thought, too. I didn't remember seeing anything new, but.
No, thank you, Michaela. And so in the, in the conversation that Kevin and I had earlier tonight, I was talking about the potential for some screening for the folks at 20 Timothy Bourne in spite of the fact that we rearranged the driveway where that road would typically come out as a four way intersection. Those cars are coming out sort of into their side yard. So my, my question for Kevin this afternoon was, you know, is screening a possibility across the way for that? We don't know what sort of screening or any discussions with the neighbors next door about that, or whether we put that in the right of way. But that was the, the one thing that I was looking at if we're gonna, if, you know, typically on a four way intersection, you know, things line up and the headlights go where the headlights go. But you may remember when we were out there, and I don't know if it was intentional, but the folks at 20 had a sign in the window saying, hi, hi y'all. So that was my, that was my conversation with Kevin just recently. And we did talk to a number of folks today. It's been sort of a gang buster week. So that was the only sort of outstanding issue I had. As you and I had talked about before, we are moving the roadway under the assumption that the site distance is poor along Timothy Bourne Cartway. We haven't seen a site diagram for that, a site triangle for that. It's anecdotal at this point. And whether the board wants to see that or not is, is an issue. I always like to have sort of a decision made on what we've seen rather than anecdotes. And while six of us out there looked at it and said, yeah, that looks like it's not a very long distance, I think having that, having that site triangle that says, yeah, this, here's the distance we've got and we've got a justified reason for moving the roadway. I never want anybody's plan to be appealed because of a technicality for something like that. So it's up to the, up to the petition, up to the board how they want to deal with that. But typically if someone says, we're moving the roadway, we're giving a waiver because the site distance is poor, having that number that says, here's what the size distance is, I think is one of those things that you typically see. But I'll leave that to the board's discretion.
Okay, board, comment, please. Charlotte?
Wish we had brought this up last time we discussed it so we could go forward with it now rather than coming up with things serially, asking the Kevin and Mike to keep coming back and the Bingham's to keep paying for them to keep coming back.
As Kevin and I talked earlier today, I said, I don't know that we've had much conversation about this since our last meeting. And frankly, we haven't. It's just been plenty of things going on and it was one of those things that we talked in apologies, but it's, you know, clearly up to the board. The board feels comfortable with this. It's, this is not, you know, a, a hearing where we've had, you know, a, a bunch of butters, they're going, what, this is awful, this is terrible. I've had a few conversations with Mr. Simmons up the road. But, you know, it's, it's unfortunately, it's just one of those things that, that it didn't get brought up formally to the board in, earlier than, than the meeting. My apologies.
Kevin?
If I may, at least with regards to, to the screening, I don't think that we're opposed to that, but what I'd suggest is rather than having, being a condition, because it's not necessarily our property, that, that there'd be a finding that we'll have a conversation and work with the neighbors to find some appropriate screening. That, I think, would be a perfectly reasonable thing to do and something that would be agreeable to. But I wouldn't want to condition this on planting on someone else's property.
You're right, Kevin, you can't do that. So would the board like to put that into the decision? That they will have a conversation with the neighbors because it is not their property and see whether that is desirable for the neighbors across the street? What does the board say?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, Pam?
No, I think that's always a good idea.
Yeah, you can't go planting on somebody else's property.
Not unless they want you to.
Well, yeah.
Jim, could I, could I speak to the site?
Yes, Mike, of course.
With all due respect to Tom Planner, I could do a site distance triangle, but it's gonna, it's gonna demonstrate the obvious. The center line was staked and site triangles are nice to see on a plan, but there's nothing like being on the site and actually looking at it. So, you know, it's like, to me, it's obvious, but I don't want to overstep my bounds. I don't think that it's necessary to do the site triangle in my humble opinion.
And no, no offense and no overstepping in my opinion, Mike.
Thank you.
Right. I think at least four of us were out there at the site. So I'd like to hear what the board has to say. And I'll jump in and say, it's obvious to me. Bob?
Looking at the drawing, what could you do to improve the sight line? I mean, I, I don't see any way you could move that that's going to improve it.
Right.
Am I correct?
I, I believe you are.
Yep.
I think moving it to where it is has improved it, in fact.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the point.
Yeah.
Yeah. Charlotte?
The actual problem with the, with the, being able to see what's coming down the road isn't with the placement of the road at all. It's been improved. It's that the land rises slightly as it goes toward 28 and there's, it's heavily planted, not on the land that the Bingham's own, but on the neighbor's land about which they can do nothing. So the problem is quite a distance from the road and not within their power to solve.
Jim, you had your hand up.
Yes, I believe if there's a problem, the, the person could plant on their own land if necessary. I don't think it's that big a deal. I think they've done a good job in accommodating everybody and we really need to move these along.
So I agree. Does anybody have any objection to closing the hearing?
Nope.
Okay, may I have a motion to that effect, please? Jim?
I move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Paul?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment that John Drury has recused himself as he had in the past meetings. Wanted to get that in the record.
Well, no, he, I thought that was in the record.
Well, no.
Okay. All right, then we want to instruct our administration, administrators to create a positive decision on this. Enrique? Okay. And we will see that on the 26th. Okay?
Are we gonna vote to close the hearing or?
Oh, I'm sorry, I guess I'm asleep at the switch here. Yeah, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Six out of the six.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
And now I would need a motion to move back to the original agenda of the A and R for Sandwich Road Development.
So move.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to move back to the original order of the agenda. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Okay, we're back to the original. And I'm assuming that all of you have seen, I shouldn't ever assume anything, but have seen the request for an approval not required. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Are there any questions on that one? Okay, then I need a motion.
I move to endorse.
Second. In regard to buildability, et cetera.
Regarding the buildability, yes.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Thank you. Next, then, we move on to public hearing. Applicant, applicant is Sandwich Road Development LLC, special permit application along with a site plan review application to have a contractor's yard in the AGA district, including a contractor's yard building with floor area of 7,450 square feet and exterior contractor's yard, storage, parking, and assembly area of 39,900 square feet and one detached single family dwelling located at zero Sandwich Road, map number 1701032000. And then we need to elevate. Yep. Have we got everybody elevated? Was Mark going to join you guys? Do you know? Oh, there he is. Okay. So we have three people here. Again, Kevin Clower, Tom Bunker, and Mark Bogosian.
Confusingly enough, I'm, I'm not on this. I think Bob is here, but I think Bob might be logged in as the attendees as me for some reason.
Yeah, there was two Kevin Clowers, I saw that.
One is enough.
Yeah.
That's what we've been saying, Kevin, for a long time.
So, there we go. I'm gonna, I'll, I'll exit, I'll exit stage.
Okay.
Good night, Kevin.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, and I think and hope that you all received a copy of Bob Ament's letter that he sent in regard to this property. We also have additional letter comments. Now Bob's has to do with what we're actually looking at specifically. So I think, Bob, do you want to present that?
Sure, thank you. Good evening, everybody. So if you wish me to read my letter, I can, I can read it.
Let me ask whether everybody has seen it and read it. That might be more.
All set.
All set.
Everybody's all set. Does anybody have any questions about right now in regard to his letter? Okay.
If you'd like me to just summarize a couple of the important points, I wouldn't mind doing that.
Of course, please feel free.
Yeah, I think the LeBrun's letter, they're the owners of 380 Hayway Road, which is the closest to Butter. It was a very well-written letter and I understand their concerns, but they certainly misunderstood the 300 foot setback requirement. What the bylaw says is that contractor's yards, the lot for the contractor's yard needs to be 300 feet away from any house built before 2000. It's an interesting bylaw provision. It's in there to protect people, but to put them on notice essentially that that contractor's yards are important to the town. They may be approved in the future. And if you're building in an agricultural district, you should take that into account. So there is no 300 foot setback applicable to the LeBrun House, but they have the benefit of the fact that there are nearby houses which were built before 2000. So that when we laid out the lot shown on the plan that you just voted to endorse approval not required, we met the requirements of 300 feet from any of the house, had the protection of zoning by law provision. But the LeBrun House was not one of them. Now, interesting, if we had needed to be 300 feet from their house with that line, we could have done that, but we didn't need to. The line is 200 feet away from their house and the closest point of the actual contractor yard will be 330 feet away from their, their house. So I wanted to point that out. Also wanted to emphasize the, what I said it towards the end of my letter to you. That had to do with the purpose of the contractor's yard bylaw. There are those of you who, like me, were around when the contractor's yard bylaws were being discussed extensively by the town. And therein the bylaw has a response to the need in the town for contractors and subcontractors to have a place to store their equipment, their vehicles and, and materials. Otherwise contractors bring their trucks home. We've had situations where people store contractors' material at their homes. Co-workers show up in the morning, park their car. Co-workers show up in the morning, park their cars, get in a company truck. And the whole purpose of contractor's yard, or a significant purpose of it, was to give opportunities to subcontractors and contractors to have a place where they could do their business and not at their residence. Even though in some circumstances, home-based business services are allowed. That's another story. The definition of contractor's yard simply says it's a place where a contractor or a subcontractor can store and do those other things. And if we focus on the word "a contractor" or "a subcontractor", I think we're making, and say that the bylaw is saying that we can only have a single contractor at a contractor's yard. We're making a very serious mistake that's totally contrary to what the purpose of those bylaws were. And there has been, was discussion at a previous meeting about possibly limiting the right to use this contractor's yard to a single business. That's not what was intended. And so as I pointed out in my letter, even though Mark Bagosian intends to use this contractor's yard for his business, and as he described to me affiliated businesses, and he has more than one business, it would be a mistake to not allow portions of the contractor's yard to be rented, or simply to allow the operator of the yard to let a somebody keep equipment there, or just a truck there by some arrangement. So I hope that that makes sense to you. I think it's a very, very strong point about the purpose of the yards. And the goal is, of course, to have the yard operate properly. So the burden, even if there is our subcontractors are more than one business that might have a place at the yard, the goal is to have it operate properly. And so that people don't start working or keep working outside hours that are allowed, for instance. But somebody should be in charge, and in this case, it would be Mark or one of his companies, obviously. And this is a situation where we're proposing accessory dwelling on the property, so there will be people associated with the business right there. And I hope that makes sense to you. The other thing I wanted to say, and it isn't in the letter that I sent you, I was thinking about this, is that it's been suggested, Mr. and Mrs. LeBrunes suggested in their letter, that the contractor's yard in this location might have adverse impacts on them. And quite the contrary to what's the appropriate use, what's the appropriate use for this seven-acre piece of property? Are they suggesting it should be residential? Well, first of all, the lot coverage could be just as great, except it would be more spread out and have a more adverse impact on deer migration and the like. But what's really important to think about is that we've proposed to locate this rather small contractor's yard in between two sides of the greener image contractor's yard, which of course already exists, really tied up against it. Are we suggesting to protect some homes that are more than 300 feet away and with the bylaw, with that setback? That instead, the thing to do is to have new residences on this seven-acre parcel, which would be immediately next to and have no setback to speak of from the existing larger contractor's yard? That doesn't make any sense. The best use of this property is an important use for the town, and that would be this contractor's yard, which meets all the requirements, and we can do more. As I said, in correspondence, the lighting can be all in motion sensors. We can do more planting if there are places where it's needed. It's been suggested that there be some limitations. That is, a note from Tom Bott suggested that there be some limitations on, for instance, having assembly of sub-assemblies be inside the buildings. That's okay. Prohibiting cutting firewood or crushing stone. That's okay. There's a suggestion that perhaps a vegetated berm should be constructed. That might be okay, but it certainly seems like it should be unnecessary where the home we're trying to protect is 330 feet away. And really significantly, it's at elevation 62 or 64. And the contractor's yard is at elevation 42. There's a substantial vegetated hill between the contractor's yard residents. So we just don't think that's necessary. And if we were gonna put that berm up, it would be up at the top of the property, just outside the electric easement that goes across the property. And to build it, to get to it, you'd end up impacting an awful lot of forest. That's what I wanted to tell you.
Okay. Jim?
Yes, I was on the board when we developed this. There's a specific need in our town. We were losing contractors badly, and we developed this bylaw very carefully, looking at setbacks and locations and the roads that they're on, being a sandwich road or another access road. And this one hits everything that we planned on, and it meets a need for the whole town. And that's really what we need to look at it, and not just focus on this little spot. This fits the purpose of the bylaw that we developed to keep our people being able to work in our town and not have to park the vehicles in front of the truck in front of their home. It solves the problem, and it hits on every single parameter that we laid out, the setbacks, the street, the size. I think it's the proper use of the piece of land.
Any other comments?
Pat?
Bob?
Yeah, I always tend to look at something as the what else could be there situation, as Bob laid out. This could have been subdivided into multiple house lots or anything that's gonna have much greater impact, setbacks that are gonna be much closer to the butters. And this, to me, is a low-impact project. As Jim mentioned, it's right on a main road, which is what we want. It's gonna keep a contractor in town. The only thing that you might hear is some people might complain about possible noise. But I'm somebody who works out in the neighborhoods of this town during the day, and you talk about noise. You got all kinds of people using leaf blowers and chippers and chainsaws and lawn mowers and all that kind of, you talk about noise. Every residential neighborhood has more noise than any contractor's yard I've ever been around. So I think this is a much better use of this property than putting a bunch of houses there.
Charlotte?
I think what Bob Amet said is really important. This meets all of our requirements, and we have no basis on which to reject it. It's inappropriate.
John?
I agree that it's a great location and it's a great idea. I have a concern about what Mr. Amet was saying about how many subcontractors should be allowed at the site. And I mean, the bylaw says contractor's yard plus one more contractor. And what it was meant to say, I don't know, but that's what it says. That's how I read it. And I remember how much scrutiny this board gave the contractor's yard, where the fellow's gonna do landscaping, and what a beautiful job he did. But we scrutinized whether he's gonna change oil there, whether he was gonna do work on his vehicles, and we put all kinds of conditions on it. And I'm not saying that this is, that we should do that in this case, but here, we have someone that's got seven bays. And he's said that he will use them all himself. And I would say that if he wants to go beyond his use and one more subcontractor in the future, he should come back to the board for that permission. Other than that, I'm full support of this.
Okay, I don't recall, John, you must have just read it, because I don't recall that one other subcontractor. And I was on the board when we struggled with this, with losing people here in town. I have no objection to Mark using it for other subcontractors. I think if people are looking for protection, we can put into our approval that whatever requirements we put into our decision go down to whatever subcontractors he put in there. I know Bob knows the language that I'm trying to grasp right now, but it slides down to his contract with what other subcontractors he has that he's leasing space to. Bob?
Well, I have the zoning bylaw, and the definition says of a contractor's yard, premises used by a building or construction contractor or subcontractor principally for storage of equipment and supplies, fabrication of sub-assemblies, and parking of field equipment. So it doesn't say anything about a contractor plus one other. It just uses the phrase, it's premises used by a contractor or subcontractor. I don't think that that language necessarily means, and I think it's a stretch and it's an extremely narrow interpretation, to say that that means not more than one can be there. But I am certain that that was not the intent of town meeting. I think those of you who were around when this is done knew that the problem was, just as I described it, finding a place for small contractors. And as I said in my note to you, if this bylaw can only be used by the contractor big enough to buy a three-acre minimum site and then build a building, it's not doing what the intent was. Now, I don't know if Mark Bagosian is going to have space to rent to other small contractors who need it. But if he does, it would be good if he could make that space available. I just don't think it should be limited. And I agree, I guess it was you, Pat, that what we should be doing is making sure that the contractor's yard, whether it's a one big contractor or a contractor with multiple tenants, is being properly operated, that the person in charge is known and that the terms of approval and the requirements of the bylaw aren't violated. As long as that's what happens, then whether it's a single business or a single business supervising some other businesses as well, that shouldn't make any difference to neighbors.
Mark, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we do have the intentions. We have small painting subcontractors that already have interest in trying to park their vehicles. The painting subcontractors currently live on King Street in one of my rentals. It's not a great place for them to be parking their vans as they get more of them. We're trying to move some of the small businesses around some of our other rentals in town, having them come over to this yard and start parking their trucks and vans, and not operating out of the apartments and houses that we rent to them.
Paul?
I have a couple of comments, Mr. Amet, and I'd like you to address them, please. One is, in the past, we've had an issue with a contractor's yard and a landscape area. They wound up chopping wood, a very noisy process in a residential area. And I don't believe you're gonna be doing that there. Perhaps you can address that issue. Secondly, it's a four-bedroom house up there, and there's been some discussion previously. And it would appear that it's housing for the workers, but I think you said that's not the case. Clarify that. And lastly, we have a letter from, unfortunately, I can't read the name, but it's 390 Hayway, asking about the evaluation of a landscape, no landscape, a wildlife corridor. And I'm not sure what's involved in that, but I'd appreciate you to address those issues. Thank you.
Sure. The last one was the wildlife corridor issue, what the house would be used for, and your first point, just remind me of it, Paul.
No cutting of wood.
Okay. That, the no cutting of wood was one of the suggestions that was in a note from Tom Bott sent around to Tom Bunker and myself today. And I've already had a chance to talk to Mark Bagosian about that.
Yeah, no cutting of firewood.
That would be fine, and I think I said that earlier.
Yep.
The use of the house, it may be workers. It could be seasonal workers. It could be a family who's one of the spouses, or both are employed by Mark. And so exactly what the use will be, we don't know, but it will be, in that sense, accessory to the to the yard and provide an element of supervision. Does that answer your question about the house?
That's fine. I thought last time you said it was not gonna be for workers, but I'm glad you clarified that.
No, I don't think, I don't recall saying. And finally, with regard to the correspondence from the owner of 390 Hayway, her emphasis is on the importance of this piece of property in the continuity of expansive conservation property that stretches all the way from north of 151 and then south of this property. It's fantastic that we have so much open space that's controlled by the town or the 300 Committee or the state in these areas. But the fact that this piece of property may be used by wildlife at this time does not mean that it cannot be developed. In this property, a portion of it is in the natural heritage endangered species zone, and therefore, for the project that's proposed and for the clearing, we've already had to go to the State Division of Fisheries and Wildlife to get their approval of this project that it does not constitute a take of any endangered species. And this project is gonna end up having a total lot coverage of parking areas and paving of just about a little less than 20%, where 40% is allowed by right. The buildings are gonna cover less than 4%, where 20% is allowed by right. And the development is clustered in an area that's actually farthest away from those residents on Hayway Road, so that there will be substantial portions of the seven-and-a-half acres, the portion of it that's not within the electric company easement, that won't be touched. And effectively, you know, if this were in the wildlife corridor and one had to provide for deer, you'd be setting aside a corridor. Well, we are setting aside a corridor. We're proposing that the distance between the electric company easement, which of course is an area that wildlife can migrate through, we're gonna preserve another 120-feet stretch of the property. So other than not developing this property at all, I don't know what more anybody could expect.
Yeah, I just wanted to make the board aware that we do have a letter from the LeBrunes that we wish to read into the record, that they wish to read. Bob has been sort of speaking to. And just in general, this is a special permit use. And as you know, under the Massachusetts general law, the board has a tremendous amount of discretion with a special permit. The bylaw in 38K2 talks about the planning board may require greater setbacks where needed to provide sufficient screening and buffering from the street and adjacent properties. So I think it's perfectly within the planning boards, right, if they want to require some additional screening to the property at the rear, particularly to the LeBrunes airhouse, and looking at it on the GIS is right at the top of the hill. So their elevation is about 64 feet. So they do have sort of a bird's eye view into the site. So I think that, as Pat and I talked about earlier today, and I forwarded on to Bob and Tom about the potential for a vegetated berm along the property, that's certainly perfectly within the board's right. But I just didn't want to have the LeBrunes comments get away from us, and I think Michaela has them queued up.
I do.
Okay, thank you, Michaela.
So I'm gonna read their letter into the record. So, January 11th, 2021, to the Falmouth Planning Board. We are writing regarding the application for a special permit by Sandwich Road Development LLC. The last meeting of the planning board where this issue was discussed was on 12/22, and we were made aware and we were made aware of this agenda item shortly before the date. But we're unable to watch the proceedings, given that it was the week of Christmas. Since that time, we have had the opportunity to view the recording of the meeting in depth. While we understand and appreciate the various ways that the applicant has met the requirements set forth by the special permit process, we would like to express additional questions and concerns we have with this project. Like many of our neighbors, we are apprehensive about the level of noise that this project will add to our neighborhood. Though the proposed contractor's yard would be located within an AGA district and there is not currently a large residential factor on the Sandwich Road side of the property, the residential area of Hayway Road will most certainly be affected. We have noted the efforts of the applicant to address this as required by the special permit process. But we must point out that it is significant to this particular case that another contractor's yard has already been permitted in close proximity to our homes. We ask that you take this into consideration as you try to ensure that there is, quote, "no adverse impact on a neighborhood primarily residential in character," end quote, as noted in section 240-38K, number five of the zoning bylaw. We would like to address the idea slash definition of, quote, "buffer" as it is used by the bylaw and as referenced in Mr. Amen's documentation. In many places, it is stated that the houses on Hayway Road are all at their required 300 foot minimum distance from the contractor's yard activity. Specifically, the applicant, the application reads, "The nearest house is about 330 feet from where the proposed contractor's yard activity is proposed. It is our home that is the nearest to this project, as we are situated at the back edge of our lot line that abuts the proposed parcel A." And looking at page one of the overall plan done by BSS Design, there is a measurement of 200 feet from our property line to the edge of the lot line for proposed parcel A. We do not see a 300 foot measurement noted. Is it implied that the remainder of the buffer is the distance to the fence surrounding the yard parking lot? We would appreciate a clarification. We would also like verification that the naturally vegetated oak pitch pine forest notation means that those trees will not be cleared. To us, the meaning of buffer is not just the distance, but more significantly in this case, to provide a sound buffer. Going to the same issue, we would also like to call attention to a very important factor. The proposed parcel A includes a 100 foot wide utility easement, which is routinely clear cut by Eversource in order for them to have access to power lines. Therefore, there is no screening or sound buffer provided within this 100 foot section. Please take this into consideration when assessing the 300 foot distance. Secondly, we noted that a question was raised at the 12/22 meeting by Mr. Drewley regarding the ability of this contractor to offer space within the yard to subcontractors. Falmouth Code defines a subcontractor, or excuse me, a contractor's yard as premises used by a building or construction contractor or subcontractor. Mr. Bogosian stated that his intention is to use the space just for his own company's equipment for the foreseeable future. But does that mean his business would at a later date be allowed to invite several subcontractors to store their equipment and supplies on site? Mr. Amen also referred to multiple subcontractors. We would appreciate a clarification. Lastly, the issue of a lighting plan was raised, including the probability of needing lighting for nighttime security. Could we expect that the yard would be lit 24/7? Thank you. Best regards, Michael and Sarah LeBrun.
And while we're on letter, we also have, this is a second letter from Dorothy Cigarzy. And as you pointed out, Tom, very correctly, she is very, very much concerned about the pathways for wildlife and that that not be disturbed. I don't know that it's necessary to read that whole letter because a lot of it reiterates what the prior letter, but more strongly puts down her concern about the wildlife corridor. Tom?
And just one other thing in the chat from the LeBrunes, they write, "Thank you for your consideration of our concerns. To be clear, we are not in opposition to the contractor's yard and we are most certainly in support of successful businesses in our town. We simply want to have a clear picture of the level of noise that will be added to our neighborhood. The asset, the board consider this as you decide the type and number and amount of vehicles allowed in the yard, as noted in the bylaw. We noticed Mr. Amen's comments that Mr. Bogosian would be willing to plant trees in the thinly treated section that faces our neighborhood, and we appreciate that gesture. Thank you for your time."
Okay.
Nothing else?
Bob?
Yeah, I wanted to ask about that, the number of vehicles and all that, because there is 39,000 square feet of parking area. So I believe in the past, we have asked for a list or a number of vehicles that were going to be in a contractor's yard. Am I incorrect?
Bob, you are quite correct, and I discussed that with Tom today. We found it's, it didn't really work as well as we'd anticipated because people change out their vehicles according to their needs. They sell some, they buy others. And so it seemed that when we looked at it a few years later, the vehicles that we had permitted, it was a different mix.
Well, necessarily the type of vehicle, but the number of vehicles. I mean, can you have 40 vehicles on this property and have 40 vehicles leaving and coming every day? Or is it going to be 20? Is it going to be 10? I think.
Jim?
I believe there's 25 possible parking spaces.
Yeah.
I think it referenced that, that they're not using them right now. I think they're only using eight. But we had to find that there was adequate parking for 25 if they needed it, because that's what the zoning requires by the building. So that is a fact of life that everyone has to understand. It is controlled by the zoning and it is 25, and it's recognized in the plan.
So where we could just note the number 25. Tom?
Yeah, the bylaw in 35K, section six, says the planning board shall specify hours of operation, the type and number or amount of vehicles, equipment or supplies to be stored, what fabrication of subassemblies will be allowed, if any, and what accessory activities such as ordinary maintenance or minor repairs may be allowed. And no activities such as major repair work, painting or engine cleaning shall be allowed. So while you and I talked about this earlier, the board, the bylaw specifies that that type and number of vehicles. But I think to Jim's point, if we have a finding that says the site will be limited to 25 vehicles, if that's the number, I think that's perfectly appropriate within the bylaw and in the decision of the board.
Charlotte, and then Pam?
The abutters asked about lighting. Would it be 24/7? What kind of lighting is going to be there? And I wondered, Bob or Mike or Tom, you could talk about what the plans are and what reasonable limits could be placed on it.
Charlotte, in correspondence to you earlier today, I did address the lighting after talking to Mark Bogosian. The lighting would be motion censored, so that it would not shine all night. I also took the time to contact Emir Smikavich, who's Greener Image Landscaping Yard is next door, to ask him about his lighting. And it is motion censored. And he said, from a security point of view, he thought it was better to have the yard not be lit at night so that if those lights go on, it means something. So I think that that would be the conclusion, that the lights that are on the contractor's yard building and that will illuminate the parking and storage area would be on timers. I'm sorry, would be motion censored, although I think they would need to be on during the scheduled hours of operation. Of course, part of the year in the summer, it's still light at 7:30 in the evening. But this time of year, of course, it would be dark, and I think you have to have lightings, you know, starting at 4:00, 4:30 in the afternoon.
Neighbors, the neighbors are looking down on this lot, as I understand it. Is there any provision for making the kind of light that just shines down and is?
Well, all of the lighting would be down lighting. I do want to address that, that description and the suggestion that they're looking down on it. This lot, and Tom Bunker may have more of an opinion about the topography as well. But the topography rises fairly quickly from the area where the contractor's yard is going to be to the electric easement area, which is 100 feet wide. And that whole area sloping up to it is vegetated. And even a portion of it, the electric company easement is not entirely clear cut, although it could be, I suppose, but the first 20 feet of it or so appears from the plans to not be cut. And that's virtually at the level of the closest house. And we're only talking really about one house that's that close. So I question whether, from the LeBrun house, looking across the commelectric easement area and across a forested area, they're going to be looking down on, if you will, this contractor's yard, which is going to be 20 feet below the level, the ground level of the LeBrun house. I don't think that to say that they're going to be looking down on the yard is accurate. I don't think they're going to see it. Now, I'm not an expert at this, maybe I'm wrong. Tom Bunker may have more of an opinion. But we're talking a pretty substantial distance.
Um, did you want to comment on that?
I can say that Bob is right. They won't be looking down on it. They might be able, in the winter, well, of course, a lot is pine trees, but in the winter, if there were no leaves, they might be able to look through the woods and perhaps see the top of the roof. But it's, I think it's a mischaracterization to say that they'll be looking down onto it from their house, from their backyard, they might be able to tell that there's a clearing in the woods three or 400 feet away. But the, and also the lighting will be down lighting, so it won't be and where the lighting fixtures are, lower than the ground up along the power easement and certainly lower than the ground where these houses are. So it's, it's not going to cast light to their house.
And Pam, you were next, and then Jim and then Charlotte.
Mark, you mentioned there wasn't going to be any cutting of firewood. Is there going to be any other type of wood cutting?
We do have cabinets that come, we'll build the cabinets, so they come flat when they're shipped to us, and then we'll actually have to build those cabinets. I don't intend to be using it on a regular basis for anything like that, but if there was ever an adjustment to kitchen door or interior things inside the building, nothing that would be different than we would be able to do at a residential house, but to use the space for that.
You're not going to be just basically cutting any slabs of wood or anything like that?
No, nope.
Okay, Jim?
I believe the plan specifies that the lighting would be down lighting and also shielded from going out into the woods, that it's really focused on the land. And that's usually a requirement we have all the time. But I think I looked at all the fixtures and they are specified down and shielded.
Okay, Charlotte?
Jim just answered my question.
Okay, Tom?
Yeah, I was going to say, lighting wise, they do amazing thing with lighting these days because lighting costs money. Most of the fixtures these days are LED, they're full cutoff, and they're motion activated as well with timers that have solar timers, celestial timers. It actually calculate when the sun comes up and down and moves it, so you don't have that old school sort of dial in it. That's almost the standard package, I think, these days for most lighting operations because the cost of electricity over the time, people don't want to run the lights more than they should. So I think that that's fine as far as the lighting goes. I did want to just touch base on the thing we talked about earlier about subassemblies are permitted, but inside of the structures. And that, you know, certainly you're going to be loading things on and off the property, but I think the intent of the contractor's yard is for those subassemblies to happen inside of the building rather than outside under the lot. So I think that's one of the things that we had talked about earlier, but I just want to clarify that. And just one other thing about the elevations. As I said before, and I'm looking at the town GIS, 380, the LeBrunes property is very much at the back of their property, and it's at an elevation of 62 on the plan, on the map. And 62 is essentially 62 and 64 are the top of that hill, and everything at this point slopes down. So while there is some distance and while there is some vegetation, their house, and it's probably two stories, I think I looked at it as that extent, does sit at the top of that hill. The vegetated berm, whether one is putting or not, won't, you know, block the view. But what we've seen, what I've done in other towns, is if you have that sort of vegetated berm towards the parking area, it helps to soak up some of that sound from transmissions, from exhaust and things like that. So whether the board wants to, you know, add a vegetated berm to this is up to them. But I do want to clarify that what we, I think we were talking about is subassemblies inside. The lighting shouldn't be thrown off the site because that's just not the lighting days in LEDs with full cutoff fixtures. And I think that's it.
John, and then Bob?
A couple of things. I'd like to, at some point, discuss the hours of operation. But also on the engineering's referral, there's going to be town water service to the residential house and to the contractor's buildings in the back. But I don't, I can't find it on the plan anywhere. Is there going to be water service to both structures?
We plan on water, I think we show water service. We have, yeah, we show a water line coming in from Sandwich Road. One going to the house and one to the other. It's on sheet two.
I only have one sheet, so maybe that's why I can't see.
Yeah, there are six sheets with this plan. And we do show the two inch diameter water service to the contractor's building and a one inch diameter to the house.
And of course, you're aware that they may require a fire hydrant at some point. But that's not up to this board, that's up to the water department, the fire department.
Okay, Bob?
Yeah, so it's going to be a maximum of 25 vehicles? Is that what's going to be set? So a maximum of 25 vehicles? Okay, so getting back to the elevation of the abutter to this property, we live in a house that is 30 feet above the roadway, which is 200 feet away. And it's tree, and you really can't see it, see the road or anything. And even with cars going by, you don't see any lights. And we have a two story house and you still can't see the road from the house. So I was wondering how a vegetated berm 20 feet below would mitigate sound or mitigate any visual, if that, what kind of visual impact that would have? If it's 20 feet below where your house is, I'm not clear on how that berm would affect anything.
Well, what Bob was pointing out, Bob, is that to create a berm, they'd have to take down a lot of the trees that exist.
I understand that, and I'm just wondering, and I'm just wondering what benefit that berm would have as far as mitigating sound or vision?
Chalk it up to a harebrained idea of your chairman to try to keep sound. But I think that better for the LeBrunes would be Mark's offer to plant vegetation where it's sparse.
Yeah.
I think that would take care of a lot of the LeBrunes concern as well as the other lady who wrote in as for putting more vegetation to keep the wildlife corridor in place. And I think also to protect that, we could put into our decision that any cutting of this would have to come back to the board because we would be asking that for a protective measure.
And as far as the wildlife corridor, animals tend to be pretty lazy. I mean, we have four coyotes that use our driveway every night.
Yeah.
So, you know, animals will find their way around.
They are very lazy. I have, going over things, and correct me if I've mistaken and I've pulled things out of someplace that shouldn't be. Methods, method of sewage disposal, an IA system is going to be required here, I believe. The engineering department brought up erosion control methods. That's not indicated here. But they also said if erosion occurred, it would be on the applicant's property only and not affect the neighbors. So the question is, do you want to see erosion control methods? We need to have the method of sewage disposal. We also do not have trip generation, and I understand that this can be not as cut and dried. not as cut and dried as as say a housing development. But I wonder if it would be instructive to have a potential low and a potential high of trips out of the property. I don't that's I would like the board to discuss that and see if they want that because currently we do not have that number. The other thing I wonder, because I don't believe we have anything on this and it's site plan review, is we've got a drawing of what the building would look like, but we do not have anything in regard to the construction of it or the siding. What would it look like? And that's part of site plan review, I think. And I I thought, well, we have no landscaping plan, but that has just arrived here, I think on the seventh. So I was incorrect on that. So these are the things that I pulled out that hadn't, as far as I knew, been given to us. Jim?
Yeah, as far as the erosion control, if I remember correctly, it said that what they're building will actually reduce the amount of water that's flowing from one site to the the neighborhood that currently exists as the land being left alone. And if there was an erosion, it would be only on the applicant site. So that detail of reducing the flow was left was left out.
I got the impression, and I could be wrong again from the commentary, that it was erosion control during construction. And we have no indication of how they're going to control erosion during construction. And as you know, we can get some pretty torrential rains as well as our normal half inch, quarter inch.
There there are some standard details that were suggested in the referral from the engineering department for to staple down jute netting or for burlap. During those construction periods, and there's some standard details we would add to to the plan.
Thank you.
And as far as the septic system, we don't, we're not planning on any on an IA system. We've pointed out, I think Bob pointed out at the beginning that this is a much lower loading rate on the entire parcel than than even two houses. It's a very, very low septic flow. Well below what could be required for houses, if you count one bedroom per 10,000 square feet under the under the state title five for for zone two. It's very low, low loading rate, so we haven't haven't planned on any alternative systems for this.
We do tend to make note of that in our decision, though. Tom?
I wanted to ask Michaela if she wanted to address that as part of the staff report.
Um, yeah, so engineering had come back that there was no IA in that one. Sorry, I'm just trying to get my staff report up. I'm not sure that the plan necessarily can IA system. I'm not sure that that is currently within kind of the jurisdiction. The bylaws specify that if an IA system is needed, I I don't necessarily know that the that the board or in the current bylaws that I could see had had that ability to do so.
Okay. It was just that it was mentioned in the engineering report, so I thought we should clarify that. Jim?
I believe from my, I recall that the only time that we get involved in that is if it's a subdivision of five houses or more that we specify it. But that's the only time I remember ever pushing that on 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 a site. We really defer this to the Board of Health. That's their issue.
It is, yes. Bob?
Well, I'm interested in the planning board having all of the information in the bylaw. And so we are in a coastal pond overlay district. And the coastal pond overlay district bylaw applies not only to subdivisions of five lots or greater than five acres, but it also says commercial development requiring site plan review. So yes, the coastal pond overlay district does apply. But the bylaw does not require a an innovative special septic system. It requires that if development will create more sewage flow than specified for the particular coastal body that action be taken to reduce nutrient loading, including such things as reduction in number of units. Reduction in number of lots. Improvements to drainage or physical condition of the water body. And then the third one is the installation of septic system with advanced treatment for nitrogen reduction. So what we've said in our application is that in this case, the proposed use of the property will create would have less than one bedroom per acre. Less than one bedroom per acre. And we've clearly reduced the flow from this property way below what it would be, as was noted earlier, for just two houses and the seven acres. And that therefore the planning board would not require either a environmental impact statement with regard to that nor require the advanced treatment septic system, which is what people typically do to get around having to do the the impact statement. That's what we have to say.
I was simply bringing this up because I think it's important that we acknowledge it in the decision.
Yeah, I yeah, that makes perfect sense, noting the very limited sewage flow. I did want to mention a couple, respond to a couple of other concerns you raised, Pat. One and Mark can reply to this, but we're talking about a steel building. I think the height of the building is only 23 and a half feet high. That's important to keep in mind when you're thinking about the fact that it won't be seen or hardly seen from any of Butter's property. And both of both the roof and the sides will be steel. Just as is the building that was installed a couple of years ago next door at a Mira Smikavich's contractor's yard. So I I think that should answer your question, Pat, about what are the materials? It's a steel. It's a steel building.
Okay, color? Do we know? They come in different colors.
Mark, you have an idea of the color. Keep in mind also that this building is 200 feet up to the street. And while it presumably will be seen from the street. Now, again, keep that in mind.
We're planning on a gray color for the building.
Great, okay.
Finally, you mentioned trip generation, Pat.
Right.
Again, keep in mind, this is Sandwich Road. The road that that is one of those that are actually spelled out that you should be able to get to to this road. This is Sandwich Road with I don't know how many, is it tens of thousands of trips per day? I think that to require a trip generation study, which is totally speculative. We don't know exactly how many.
That was my point. It's really speculative.
It will make no difference in your in your decision making.
Just bringing it up because it's one of the things that we look at with this sort of thing. Was there anything else, Bob? That you wish to bring up?
No.
I think that covered everything. Does any of the board have any other questions? John?
Yes, again, hours of operation.
I think that the hours of operation, which we specified as I think it's 6:00 AM to 7:30 PM, those are the same hours, I believe, as the greener image landscaping is allowed. So it only made sense to have the same hours.
Yes.
Six days or seven? Only six.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I guess Pam?
Does anyone know if there is a bus stop for the kids anywhere near that location?
Is in a school bus stop?
Yes.
I I do not know.
I I think that there was a little kids had to cross the street across Sandwich Road. And of course, one of the nice things about this site is there's no residences for, I think, at least four lots going to the north. And to the south is the greener image landscaping. Across the street, there is a two family house, but other than that, it's mostly town conservation property.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, did you have something? Oh, okay. I've never seen a school bus stop anywhere along there, but as as Bob was pointing out, there just aren't houses around there. Okay. How does everybody feel about this? Or there's more information that needs to be provided? I think a little bit more. Am I right on that? I haven't been making notes. Tom, are there's there more information that we're looking for?
Yes, ma'am. We did get some information in from Bunker this week that we've sent to engineering for their review. So they they did receive it. I'm going to say, was it yesterday, Tom?
We sent it to you on Thursday morning.
All right, so, yeah, late last week. So so we've got that information. We forwarded on to to engineering and they're reviewing that. So we're essentially waiting engineering to review those last set of plans. Mr. Drury has a question as well, but one thing that because I don't think we're quite ready to close the hearing tonight. So we're waiting for that, and I think we just want to drill down one more time on the alternative septic system, just to make sure we're all on the same page with that. So that's where we're at with additional review from from the town side of things.
Okay, John?
I I really think we need to have a design of the residential house and the contractor's yard building. Can't just say it's going to be gray and 23 feet high. We really need to see what it's going to be.
That's part of our design review.
I'd be happy. Rendering of the steel building and a cross section. I think we, I think you have what you need there. We thought it was quite unnecessary to provide the plans for a single family house located 89 street feet back from the street. Certainly, Mark Bogosian's in the business of being able to prepare a set of plans, but I really wonder why in your discretion, you feel you would you'd need those.
I I'd be happy to get as much details on the commercial metal building. I do not have plans for the residential house. I don't know exactly when we're going to start that process. I am in the we want to move forward as quick as we can on the commercial metal building, but the residential building is something we plan to do when time allows for our crews to do it.
Okay, Charlotte?
This is design review, site plan review.
Yeah.
It's a box we need to check.
I don't think we let some other applicant say, well, we'll get back to you when we build it. You'll see what it's going to look like.
No, we wouldn't. Charlotte? You're on mute, Charlotte.
When first we were looking at this and that question was asked about where are the elevations? The answer was for the residents, the answer was before it would be built, we would see them. But they don't have them now, but they would be back before us before anything would be built, if I've remembered it correctly.
We could potentially, I think, put that as part of our decision that before a residence is built, they must come before us for design approval.
I'd be happy to provide. I I could have my staff provide a exterior rendering of the front building to make sure that was part of the decision and anything we deviated from that, we would then come back to the board.
That sounds reasonable, I think. Tom?
Yeah, I was just going to say my my recollection from the last meeting that I likely mentioned that we typically don't have site review for a a single family house. I realize this is a single family house is a part as a product of of this development. But I don't think we usually see site plan review for single family houses with the exception of accessory housing units. So once again, it's a special permit. It's the board's discretion. But
Well, it sounds to me like John and Charlotte would both like to be an exterior rendering so that we can see how it all fits together visually, I think.
Yeah.
I think Mark can, as he said, put that very rapidly, I believe.
Yeah, we're we're happy to do that. I'll get that together quickly.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mark. Is there anything else that the board wants to bring up this evening? Okay, then I would, yes, Bob?
Well, I, Tom Bot indicated that he thought that a question of the innovative septic system would need to be further reviewed, and I think that that's something that the planning board ought to be able to to decide. This is not a case, given the limited nitrogen flow and the distance of the project from the water body affected that we should either need a environmental impact statement or that you would require such a septic system. We have clearly significantly limited the flow. We could have proposed a five bedroom house. We proposed just a four bedroom house in the there's not much septic waste going into this into the ground from this seven and a half acre site.
May I ask the board whether they were satisfied with the suggestion that in our decision, we describe why we were not requesting an IA system? That there would be very little flow here as compared to the acres? Does the board just wave your hand if you're in
One bedroom per acre is what I heard.
Yeah, okay, wave your hand if you're in sync with that rather than requiring an IA system. Okay, it looks like we're good with that. Charlotte, you would like to have an IA or?
No, no.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand up. So it looks like we're all in sync.
Thank you.
Just a description in the decision as to why we do not feel an IA system is required.
And Madam Chairman, although the board may be looking for a little more information from engineering, and the plans were simply in response to comments of engineering previously, we think we were responsive to it. Our hope is that you'd be able to, even if you leave the hearing open, in order to receive that, that at your next meeting, hopefully there'll be a a motion that the board could grant instead of not being ready to vote the decision next at your next meeting.
I would say that if engineering simply reiterates that they're okay with it, we might have a draft motion, but that does not mean we will vote it. We could potentially have a draft motion at the next meeting if that's okay with Michaela and Tom. Because I think this may be a complex enough decision that we might not be ready to vote whatever they come up with in the draft. But I don't know. If we're ready, then we could vote it. Yes, Charlotte?
Well, you know, it's been one of our one of our goals to be streamlining what we're doing.
I know.
So it'd be very good to have the draft decision and have the intention to go forward if it's at all possible.
If we can. If it's, as you said, if it's at all possible, but no promises. So right now I would need a motion to continue until the 26th.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved. John seconded it. All in favor, show by raising your hand, please. Okay, we are all in favor of continuing this until the 26th, and hopefully we would be capable of having a draft decision at that point. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, planning board discussion. Request for administrative approval Cumberland Farms 400 East Valles Highway.
Yes, ma'am. I have had a couple of conversations with Doug Troyer today. He represents the folks at Cumberland Farms. We talked about some of the concerns that in my in my memo I prepared for the board about moving the signs, site distances, the work that the board has done over the years on that corner to make it, you know, a lovely corner. a, a lovely corner. Uh, Doug called me back uh, and forwarded an email to me about a little before six, uh, the folks at Cumberland Farms have requested to withdraw their request for administrative uh, approval of a site plan change. And if the board is uh, willing, if they just simply vote to accept their request to withdraw their request, then we'll put it to bed and we'll get out here a little earlier tonight, but their request has been withdrawn.
Okay, so I need a motion to accept their withdrawal request.
So moved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept their withdrawal request. All in favor? Oh, Paul, you had a question, I'm sorry.
Tom, does that mean they withdraw this without prejudice?
Correct.
They'll come back again then.
Uh, they may, but in the conversation that we had in the, and probably the, the biggest issue in, in addition to the site distances, was the discussion, the prolonged discussion we had previously about people coming on and off the site with boats and trucks. In fact, that moving that sign is gonna widen the uh, landscape area by four feet. It's gonna reduce that front driveway to twenty-five point five feet, which is more than the minimum, but still a little tight on the side. I remember that boat thing every month. So uh, Doug Troyer's down with the boat lovers and doesn't want to make, give them any more grief trying to get around the site. So that was the primary reason for site distance and maneuvering around the site.
Hey, Paul?
Sounds like these changes they're talking about are quite minor in nature. Cooperative all along, would it be appropriate to consider administrative?
No, because they've asked to withdraw it. So it would not be appropriate. We have to vote on their request to withdraw it.
Okay.
Okay? So John has disappeared, so all in favor? Wave your hand. But Pam, are you not in favor of their withdrawal?
No, I am, sorry.
Six out of six.
Yeah, and I think, I think John left the picture because he's a neighbor and was likely recusing himself from their side.
That's why, okay. You didn't yell it out, John, I didn't know. Thanks. Okay, um, we have the warrant articles for Springtown meeting.
Alrighty, uh, so uh, in my memo that I forwarded to the board, we had some changes to the site plan bylaw and what I did is I took the uh, the bylaw amendments that we had suggested and put them into the form of a, of an article uh, and gave you a markup of the bylaw as well. So presently, the bylaw amendment is split into two parts. One with two forty, one ninety-two applicability and the second with uh, two forty, one ninety-eight lapses of decision. Uh, when, and I put them in two separate articles because the last time we were looking at changing something in our site plan bylaw and we had two components to it. Uh, the first part of the bylaw was shot down and we never got a chance to talk about the second part. So with that in mind, I suggested putting the article into uh, the changes amendments to the site plan bylaw into those two segments, one for applicability and one to uh, create the lapse of decision from two years to three years. So that is uh, why we split those up and we have the bylaw language uh, available for the board. And I could put it up on the screen if you would like.
Has everybody seen this? Okay, it looks like everybody has seen it. I don't see anybody shaking their head negatively. Um, are you good to go with these two things like this? Charlotte?
Looks like um, Kale or Tom made other changes that we requested.
I agree. That's why I think we're all good to go with it.
Right.
Uh, Tom, would, would you like a vote on these to, that we're okay to put them on the warrant?
Uh, yes, that's what, that, that is our intent. I, I, I don't like to, I like to have a, an affirmative motion of the board to submit them to the warrant. So it would be uh, site plan additions, uh, two forty, one ninety-two and two forty, uh, one ninety-eight.
Okay, let's take this separately. So I'd need a motion to uh, accept two forty, one ninety-two as printed here in our um, whatever you call it, to place on the warrant.
So moved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All, please raise your hands in favor of this, seven out of seven. Okay, now I need a motion for two forty dash one ninety-eight lapses of decision.
So moved.
Be printed on the warrant. Okay, it's moved and seconded. All in favor, raise your hands, please. Seven out of seven. Thank you. Then, next article. Tom, you go into that, cause that's the zoning map. It gets a little bit, you wanted to explain it better.
So uh, so when we last talked, we were gonna pull those two boxes out of the, off the zoning map. Uh, the footnotes and the, the legend, Charlotte had asked to keep the legend in place. So the bylaw for the zoning map is a bit more generic. I have about a two-page memo from Bob Mitchell about some of the things in our, in our zoning map that we wanted to address and I'd hope to uh, recraft that uh, to be a bit more specific as to the other things uh, for the map to bring them into consistency that we've got on the uh, on the website and what's in the official map and, and what we're selling. Uh, but there is the point to, to review Jim's point. Uh, the, uh, changes to the zoning map, don't rezone any property. Everything stays zoned exactly as it is. It is largely a housekeeping measure to bring the various versions of the zoning map is one uh, map, eliminating those footnotes on it to add some clarity to the map and getting us to uh, to those one map that's being used everywhere. Uh, the biggest issue with our zoning map is because with all the overlay districts we have, water overlay, coastal pond overlay, senior, uh, there's just a, a number of overlays, so you can't show them all on the map. Uh, but they, all the overlays are referenced on the map and there's in fact a second map that you can look at by pulling up GIS layers or by getting one from GIS to show the overlays. So our map isn't going to change other than the legends and the notations on it.
So that's what you've got there. And this is the article. Does anybody, bless you? Does anybody have any questions or comments in regard to this? If you're good with it, I would like a motion then to put this article on the warrant.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Okay, seven out of seven. Then, the next one is Tom is still working with Frank Duffy on what, Tom?
Yeah, so uh, this is uh, so this is the third article to see if the town will vote appropriate sum of money for the purpose of continuing the zoning bylaw recodification phase one or to take any other action on the matter. Uh, Frank and I uh, talked last week, uh, I called him today. He was knee-deep in wastewater treatment issues, uh, largely because the Buzzards Bay Coalition is suing the town over the lack of innovative and alternative septic systems. Uh, so Frank, I can't get back to you on that, I'll have it tomorrow. Uh, but as an act of faith, uh, with, uh, certainly with town council, if not with me, uh, that we would suggest this other article, see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money for the purpose of continuing zoning bylaw recodification phase one.
And I think Frank had indicated when he was with us that that would be fine and that the uh, it's a in a way sort of a placeholder, that the dollar figure could be inserted at a later date. Is that correct, Tom?
That's correct. And in the, in the conference call we had with uh, Frank and Bob and Bob, uh, you know, we don't really know what that dollar amount is. Uh, it sort of depends on how much work we get done in the interim with the uh, working group and vetting those uh, things in the matrix. So we do have a meeting tentatively set up for the working group for January twenty-seventh to start going through that uh, sixty-page matrix in, in vetting some of those changes in there. So um, we're pretty comfortable with uh, with, you know, the language Frank's pretty comfortable with the, with uh, having this uh, in a warrant article that'll allow us to expand those funds upon town meetings vote. We won't have to wait till July uh, to use those monies, cause we'd really like to move the ball on this. Uh, uh, respect the comments made by the various folks who've commented on it. Bet those and keep this process moving along so we can have a vote in November on the recodification.
So you would like a vote of the planning board tonight to accept the language that is here, is that correct?
Uh, to accept the language that town council will be providing uh, hopefully tomorrow.
Okay. Are you all okay with that, without having seen it?
Yep.
Okay, so we, I would like a motion then to accept the language that town council will be planning, will be uh, providing tomorrow in regard to the recodification phase one extension.
So.
Okay, is there a second? It's good, okay, moved seconded. All in favor, please show your hands. Pam? Okay, thank you. So seven out of seven. Okay, we're good on that. Thank you.
Tom, what time is that recodification meeting on the twenty-seventh?
Uh, we are same bat time, eleven o'clock.
Eleven to one.
Eleven to one.
And yes, Tom, I will be able to attend. Okay, under general correspondence there, I did not print it all out. Yeah, uh, this comes from Julian Suso and it was sent through to all of you. Have you seen it in regard to the Lewis Neck Road parcel?
No.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You saw it, okay. Um, they're looking to get some money. They've applied for funding in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand for four affordable housing units from the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, F A H F, of which the select board of the trustees. And then there's an attached application package that provides the full details of the proposal and there is a unit summary of um, what's going on there. So I would suggest, this is just for informational purposes. So I would suggest you all look at that. Um, it was forwarded through to us, there were three items on it. So it's a, it's a request for funding and he, it was informative of us. Yes, Paul?
Uh, no, it's not on the agenda to discuss this particular item. But we had made a strong recommendation opposing the four units on that property.
Acknowledge it.
Forward and, and now's not the time to talk about it, but why are we getting this thing now? If we've opposed the project itself and then moving ahead regardless of the uh, it's in combino in Spanish, the, the agreement.
Just to keep us informed, I would assume. Yes, Jim?
The letter says, because of the improvements of the road, they're determined that our objection is moot. So they're really overriding our objection because they say because the roots wrote approved, that now our objection to the four houses is a moot point. That's what I read in the letter. And I was disturbed by that. I mean, they're just.
The road is approved, is improved.
Well, we can't talk about it now. I suggest we put it on the agenda.
We could do that, if you like.
Yes.
I, I agree with Jim. There, there's something.
It's not moot for me.
I know. I think it's not moot for any of us. John?
Uh, yes, uh, this is a letter to CPC committee. And it's regarding funding for four affordable homes if they get approved. So it, it really has nothing to do with the planning board. It's just uh, Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, we voted to support these four affordable homes if they get built with funding and then Frank, I mean, um, Julian is sending that letter to CPC. CPC will vote on whether to approve the funding in the future or not to approve it and then that will get sent to the selectmen.
And our objection is noted in there too.
Yes, it is.
So, Paul?
Once again, we can't be discussing this. It's not on the agenda.
Right.
Yep. So I suggest you all look at this, okay? Future agenda items?
If I may?
We, I think we've got our agenda. Yes, Tom?
Uh, two things I, I wanted to point out, uh, if I can share my screen for just a moment.
Sure.
I think what you see in front of you is the davisstraits.com reset web, uh, web, uh, website that would, the consultants have put together for us.
Right.
I want to put a plug in for our viewing audience that the website is available. Uh, in the website at Take Action, there is a uh, place where you can take the survey. Uh, so I told uh, the board that we would not let this uh, lie. So the website is active. The survey is out there and we will be doing our best to proselytize this at every opportunity, including asking for an announcement at the next selectman's meeting as well. At our next meeting, I'll get you an update on what sort of activity we've had on the website and what sort of uh, hits we've had on the survey. But well, once again, uh, the website is up, the website is live and I encourage our, our viewing audience to uh, to take a look and uh, take the survey and get us the input that we need for the Davis Straits area. Second thing I wanted to point out is that on uh, the thirteenth is our first public meeting of Complete Streets, the first public uh, meeting for Complete Streets at six o'clock. There is a Zoom link to that, so we invite the public to participate in our very first Complete Streets public meeting. Uh, basically, the Cape Cod Commission, uh, Falmouth DPW and I will all be in attendance and we look forward to you uh, stopping in as well, uh, members of the board and the, and the general public.
Tom, can all of these be accessed from the planning board site?
Uh, yes ma'am, they can and if for some reason the link to uh, the uh, form, uh, the uh, Complete Streets isn't up there, we'll get it up there uh, in the morning.
Thank you.
But absolutely Davis Straits is all over our website.
Because anybody who's listening tonight, it could be, they could be hard-pressed to take notes fast.
Yes, and that includes, uh, uh, I don't like to call out people individually, but Jane Perry, if you're, if you're watching, uh, you know, uh, we got you the information today and if you got questions, don't be shy about giving us a call to make sure you get to the meeting.
Great. Charlotte, you had something to say?
Um, you asked about future agenda items? And um, I'd like to ask for an update on our uh, multifamily um, bylaw, how it's coming along.
Okay, that's up to John to know whether he's got anything to update at this point.
Well, even knowing if it's.
But not quite there yet.
Very close.
He says it's not quite there yet, very close.
Maybe the twenty-sixth.
Maybe. But what I have done usually is they put a placeholder in, in the office and I say, check with John before we put it on the agenda, okay?
Fair enough.
Yes, Tom?
And I have not heard from Eric Turkington since uh, about eleven forty-five this morning.
Such a slacker.
And it's, you know, uh, uh, you, you know me, I can't say anything, I can't refute that. So, uh, yeah, we talked about a couple different things, uh, IA systems uh, and the multifamily bylaw as well, so.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Okay, it is eight-four, oh, Bob? Get yourself off mute.
We received a uh, letter from the town clerk about campaign finance.
Oh, I forgot all about that. I am so sorry. You all have to go into the planning office and sign this.
I got something in the mail.
You can sign, you can sign the one you have.
This one here?
Well, so we all have individual copies. Sign it and drop it off at.
Yeah, the, the question is, what are the dates spread there?
Right. Yeah, it asks for dates and then there's no place for a signature.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, there is. Right here.
In these, in the box here?
Yeah, right across that first line. It says to print your name and then you sign it.
Okay.
My question is, what are the dates?
Period is, the reporting period.
Yeah, what are those dates?
It's my understanding it's two thousand nineteen, uh, two thousand twenty, sorry.
Well, uh, well.
Submitted it that way yesterday.
What it, what was the date?
The beginning is two thousand twenty, ending is two thousand twenty, so January twenty twenty, December twenty twenty.
Okay, great.
Right, Paul?
That's the way I submitted it yesterday.
Okay. Um.
I don't see any of you guys. I don't see any of you guys next week. I understand you didn't fill out the form correctly.
We got arrested, right?
We were incarcerated.
That's just it, you know, what boxes do you check if you, if none of it applies to you?
Well, I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask Melinda to check in with the town clerk and forward you an email to that effect. Is that's okay?
Yeah.
This is, this is a different form than we've had in the past. It comes out every year.
Yeah.
And it is different.
Yeah.
This year. In the past, we just simply put our date that we were signing it and signed our names and put off a sought planning board.
Right.
Even though we weren't running.
Right.
Because it says up there that you're certifying that you're a candidate or currently hold municipal office. They've not, you've not received any contributions, made any expenditures. And I certify that I do not have a political committee. So I'm assuming, Paul, that you're quite correct that it's the year beginning January one, twenty twenty, ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty.
That's my interpretation. That's right.
I'll, I'll get a clarification through Melinda and have her send it out to you guys just to make sure.
Great. Okay, thank you. And thank you, Bob, for bringing that up. I had it upside down and didn't see it.
And, and one other thing before we go. I really don't like Zoom meetings. I'm sure most people don't care for them. But I'd like to make a request that if you are not speaking, to have yourself on mute because there's, there is background stuff that goes on and for me, I'm easily distracted. So I, I'd appreciate it if people could just mute themselves if they are not speaking.
And I'm happy to say to everybody, anybody, take yourself off mute because I frequently have to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Bob, for saying that. And I should remind everybody to mute at the beginning of the meeting, okay?
Okay.
So it is now eight eighteen. We are adjourned.
Good night, everybody. Stay well, stay healthy.
You too.